Recording in progress.
On the board of the regular meeting of the Riedel City Council. Roll call, please.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Mayor Cortez Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Woodall?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one edition, under God, and with physical with liberty and justice for all. Public presentation. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph Brown Act. Items requiring council actions unlisted on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda consideration if the council directs. Unless a finding is made by at least two thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please let me comment to a maximum of three minutes. Rich, got any ideas? Okay, any hand raised or email? And we will close public presentation and I will ask if there's any council member wishes to remove anything from the consent panel.
Yeah, I'm more likely to move while you're following.
Anyone? So, emails or no, do you have wishes to remove anything? Then I will ask for motion to approve items one through four.
So.
You have a motion and they're second, second, need vote?
Hmm, come on.
I'm voting yes.
I'm going to say yes.
Okay, there's. Huh?
I know.
We're doing this. I think we have a lot. I can hear. I don't know if you can hear us or not on that sensitive or something.
Sorry, it's not here. Got to be.
I'm hiring. Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, I read through the, what the action is is to approve hiring Susan Talbot and Lady Backer, this one. And I'm just, I just want to say that I'm feeling half her back, but I missed the fact that she's left. Well, she's for wrong reasons, but that she left the reason is because she was a real asset to the city. And so I'm just taking the comments, I'm glad they had her back.
Here. All right, so, you make a motion?
I'll make a motion and we approve items five.
You have a motion, second, second, need vote?
No, no, I can't.
Mine isn't yes.
I want to.
Mine is yes. I think.
Mine is different.
Yeah, I think there's some crosswires.
Something's happened to your mother before because this, this is only.
Yeah, it wasn't like that. Lauren, it was just like mine. And then you have others here as it might goes.
Lauren, councilwoman.
And then I'm, neither of them will go.
We.
Yeah. We can give a little public flag. Well, welcome here as well.
It's a warm.
City manager of staff report, page twenty-four in our package, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes, members of the council, just want to point out that council member Mayor Carter attended the Humboldt County Trail Summit on behalf of the city back on Saturday, the twenty-fourth of September to showcase the Ea River Trail Project, so thank you, council member Carter. Thanks. Uh, staff has obviously been engaging in multiple meetings with Pacific Gas and Electric, our friends at the city of Fortuna, the county of Humboldt, uh, and others regarding electrical transmission line deficiencies. We will be meeting, uh, again with Senator McGuire's staff this coming Friday. Then there is another meeting with the senator scheduled for later in October. Uh, Dryco's slurry seal project and actually we'll mention one other thing on the PG&E item is that there's also going to be a board of supervisors meeting with a full presentation for Pacific Gas and Electric at the November first, Tuesday, November first, uh, for a supervisors meeting. Uh, we want to encourage anybody impacted by this, uh, to, to attend that, to, to attend that board meeting in the region. Uh, Dryco's slurry seal project has largely been completed, uh, the ceiling itself has been completed. Um, uh, the, uh, project included only one minor change order, uh, which was the addition of short seal coat on the lower end of portrait avenue. There was some, uh, additional work done there, uh, in the pavement projects, uh, earlier, uh, including replacement of, uh, some drainage culverts. Uh, staff will be working at Dryco, then striping subcontractor on the striping, uh, projects within the, within the city. We expect that those will occur, uh, inside of the next two weeks. So there's a little period of time where the, uh, slurry needs to cure and then the striping should occur in between one and two weeks from now. Uh, so we are working with them on doing some change orders to, uh, add, um, mostly pedestrian facilities, uh, to kind of touch those up in various locations. And as the councils will see at their days, uh, at their desks, uh, this evening, Corporal Crystal Landry is on the cover of the North Coast Journal for the current edition, which I believe comes tomorrow. So it's been out for about a week now. Uh, we want to thank, uh, Corporal Landry on that article and also the offer of that, that article. Uh, City Hall's power backup system was tested, uh, back on Thursday last week during a short, uh, power outage and subsequent surges to the building. And all went well at City Hall. Uh, the building was able to be disconnected from the grid, uh, following the, uh, power outage. Uh, we were experiencing some pretty severe fluctuations in power. We were able to flip it straight to battery and instantaneously, uh, stabilize the electricity in the building. So that was very good. With that, uh, I don't have any other updates, uh, but I'm, uh, happy to turn it back to the mayor to see if there's any questions or comments to staff.
Thank you. We're excited about Crystal being on the cover, very positive of our article. And, um, I will ask now, um, Mayor Cortez.
Uh, I was going to say just exactly that, Crystal, the great woman presenting the Riedel Police Department and the city of Riedel. Thank you, Crystal.
Also, I've heard, I've also gotten a lot of positive feedback in the community for this article and, uh, so thanks to Crystal. And, uh, Chief Allen, you are quoted very, very well also, so I'm just giving you two. Yeah, it was a nice article. Um, yeah, that's it, thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
No, I was just going to say, she's been amazing for a long time. After riding around with her, she's just really impressive. Get more like her.
No other questions? No. Councilmember Wilson?
Uh, as you said, of course.
Thank you, gentlemen, we will close. Now, I've noted reports and go on to study call lines. Unmet transit needs, public hearing, I mean, twenty-eight in our package, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes, members of the council. Uh, each year, as established by the Teleport Transportation Development Act, or the TDA, uh, the Humboldt County Association of Governments is required to conduct a citizen participation process to identify any unmet transit needs, uh, within the county. So this process is required, uh, prior to the allocation of TDA funding, uh, the following fiscal year, of which, uh, the city of Riedel is a beneficiary of. All comments deemed to meet to the definition of an unmet transit need will then be analyzed to determine if the need is reasonable to meet. Uh, so in addition to, uh, the county's hearings, there will be hearings in all the jurisdictions in the county, including, uh, the cities. Uh, and so it is recommended that, uh, each city conduct its own separate hearings, uh, for its jurisdictions, for its jurisdiction. Um, so with that, what we're asking the council to do is open a public hearing and receive any input on unmet transit needs in the community, uh, close the public hearing and make a motion to direct staff to send a letter to Humboldt County Association of Governments relaying any comments made, if any, uh, during the public hearing regarding, uh, the unmet transit needs. And so my understanding is we might have Stevie Luther on the line. Uh, at five eighty-eight. And if that is him, go ahead and unmute yourself. Uh, Stevie Luther's with HCOG and he is doing double duty. This is the city of Eureka's, uh, public hearing is also scheduled at the exact same time. So Stevie, if you're on the line, uh, did you have any, uh, other additional comments?
Hi, uh, thank you, city manager Knop, and good evening, mayor and city council members. This is Stevie Luther with HCOG. I do not have anything to add to that excellent synopsis. And, um, I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have and look forward to collecting any comments. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Um, councilmember Wilson?
I have no.
Councilmember Woodall? Yeah. Mayor Cortez?
Nye, thank you.
Councilmember Carter, no questions. Uh, is there any, uh, Rich, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, um, are there any hand raised or emails? Yeah. Then, um, Mr. Luther, we apparently have no questions and, but we appreciate you being here and we appreciate you, um, making yourself available for questions.
Absolutely, my pleasure.
Thank you. Um, so is there a motion to, um, for, to direct staff to write a letter relating to HCOG and comments made or not made during the public hearing? Do we, have a motion in there, second, second? You have a motion in the second, all in favor? All right, aye. Motion carries five zero. Now we'll come to ordinance and special resolutions, adopt resolution number one five five three, deck two zero two two, authorizing a purchase of equipment for the police department, page thirty-four in our package. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes, members of the council. I'm going to go ahead and, uh, hand this off to Travis Sandborn, the city's new finance director.
Welcome back, Travis.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Barnes, members of the city council. The Riedel Police Department has identified the need for this police equipment and related paraphernalia essential to both public and officer safety. The department has determined that two new vehicles are needed to replace two aging vehicles in the fleet. Additional equipment needed include a copy scanning machine, body cameras, radios, training software, and mounting equipment needed for computers purchased last year with major review funds. The aging vehicles would be sold via government surplus auctions, which have proved successful in the past and would assist in offsetting vehicle replacement costs. Additionally, city staff is working with the USDA Community Facility Grant Program, which could help offset up to fifty thousand dollars in qualified expenses. Any results of the USDA grant, a budget or debt may be needed at a later date. I want to thank you for your time this evening and we look forward to hearing your questions now.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall? Um, get to me up later. Okay. Uh, no questions right now, thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, just, um, why, why two different types of vehicles, why not just one? Why, why wouldn't they be the same? So I think the chief is, uh, best to answer that.
So one of the vehicles will replace the, uh, community services vehicle. That's the truck that you see missing there, then the other one we have in control. And that will replace the ultimate that's we have right now.
So one, one is a God Charger and one is a Ford Maverick?
Yeah, Ford Maverick is the pickup truck. Uh, we have one for the community service office in there.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Mayor Cortez?
Thank you, Mayor Barnes. Uh, chief, the God Charger that will let the, uh, configured like CHP vehicles, uh, that is running chargers? Yes. And a Humboldt standard heavy unit, everything on it, uh, to which we add our unit packages and radios and stuff like that. Correct. Thank you, that's all.
Wait, um, hold people well. I don't want. Maverick, it'll be better for her doing the animal control.
Absolutely.
Yeah, there's a lot of them asked about cameras. I just, I know we had cameras at one time, are they all still working or?
They're at their lights.
Pardon?
They're at their lights in, this is one of the cameras that we're talking about right now. Um, when you speak with them, they talk about five or six years lifespan for the cameras. Our actual contract is probably two weeks ago and so we're trying to reestablish that contract.
So they're probably, they've advanced a lot.
Yes. Yes.
No, I was just wondering, that was all I had there. Thank you. Um, any hand raised or email? Any questions?
No.
Yeah, I think we are ready for our auction.
Uh, Mayor Barnes, I'll move the, we approved resolution number fifteen fifty-three, damage two zero two three.
Thank you, is there a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Now let's come to council reports. Mayor Cortez?
Thank you, Mayor Barnes. So, as I'm getting closer to my, uh, the end of my term, a city council member and since I'm not running again, well, I'm starting to feel like a lame duck in, uh, establishing a few, uh, items, you know, that I'd like to see acted upon by Bill. And the two are, are linked up here. Uh, the first is the pathing, uh, made of all. I think that it's, uh, pivotal for the city to, uh, have solid financing that it would count on. And the second is, I'd like to have the council, uh, even, even in study session, which, which really I would prefer, uh, to look at the police department. Um, it's, it's staffing, it's hours of service. Um, people in the office, people in the field, do we have the right number? Uh, do we need more hours at one or the other? And what's going to be the impact ultimately, uh, financially? So, anyway, I, I'd like to schedule a study session, uh, sometime, I guess, after the first, uh, first November.
Yeah, that's intense, uh, since the shirt, yes. Okay. I think we're good. City manager.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, Mayor Barnes.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, um, as Kyle mentioned, I attended the Humboldt Trail Summit. It was a really nice event and I got so much support and positive feedback about the city of Riedel. And, um, you know, after the PG&E thing, things that kind of take the wind out of your sails. It was really nice to go there and just have this really awesome positive experience. Um, people are very supportive of us and not just our trail project, but what the city looks like in general and just what a, what a nice place it is. So that was really, really encouraging. Um, I had a Redwood Regional Economic Development Commission meeting. Uh, the PG&E fiasco dominated that meeting also. Uh, but what, what came out of that was that, um, those of us in Southern Humboldt do have a lot of support in our neighboring jurisdictions. Everybody's pulling for us, for whatever it matters. Um, and then we had a nuisance advisory committee meeting where we talked a lot about, uh, maybe looking at the city's parking ordinances, specifically dealing with RVs and utility trailers. And that's how I, that's my report. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, um, last week I, I attended along with, uh, the city manager, we, uh, attended a HWMA joint task force with the LTF committee and, and the board members of, sorry, HWMA. Yeah, this topic being, uh, the establishment of a course former of this thirteen eighty-three, how they're going to use, uh, HWMA is going to be the forerunner and they shut down their recycling center and they're repurposing that to be a, a pre-processing, uh, place. It's kind of a, as the guy in the salt room described, it's kind of a cart before the horse because the goal is to get a place where you actually, uh, recycle the, uh, food waste into compost, which could be sold. And they, they're working with Brandon Dairy to do a, a slurry type thing with that. But it's still, still a lot of stuff up in the air. A lot of stuff, um, is how much cost would be shared. Um, I don't, I don't see how, um, HWMA is going to be able to afford this whole thing for them to take this on from the jurisdictions to the ones that are really responsible to get their organic food waste, which was the thirteen eighty-three, taken care of. And so they're talking about having possibly another joint session where they figure out how to distribute the cost, um, they want to say distribute the cost of the impact of both shutting down the recycling center and replacing that and, uh, repurposing this, uh, the, the organic pre-sorting and staffing that is in a, somewhere in the vicinity of probably seventy million dollar that it's going to take to do that. So there's a, there's a big expense to the county as well as it'll be how that impacts the city. I'm sure it will be as proportional because we're a little city. And we don't, we don't fall into some of these, um, requirements immediately, which is take, will really take place, starting the first of two thousand twenty-two. And it'll have more impact in twenty twenty-three and then, um, as they get, they have to get trucks through the colony. Uh, town cycle is not really a good player in this, uh, but they've not approved, they're not really on board with everything, particularly the timeframe to get the trucks. They don't find that acceptable. Um, how much Fortuna shares in this, they're, they're not a member of HWMA. So anyhow, more details to come, unless Kyle has anything to add to it.
No, I think that's, uh, an excellent summary. Um, you know, just to put it into perspective, you know, people who, uh, subscribe to driver services are also, uh, you know, paying for recycling often and the green waste. This announces another kind of stream that hopefully will be able to get incorporated into, into green waste. But it's, by, by orders of management, it's, it's a, it's a significant, uh, new, um, system that is required by, uh, by the state. And so the implementation is, uh, is going to be difficult, uh, but it is, uh, you know, part of state law.
They, they haven't really defined how they're going to implement this. Uh, they're very vague in that the, they didn't address the, put the bags in the, the carts. Most, most cities just put the green waste, just put the food waste in with the green waste and that's how they're dealing with it. Uh, city San Jose, they just put it in with the garbage and we'll filter it out here. And so bigger jurisdictions have more resources obviously to do that than, um, in, in fact, I remember that wasn't a county, in our case, we're a countywide system instead of an individual city. Most cities are taking this on themselves, so. Anyway, that's enough said for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
Um, I have an HPA meeting tomorrow morning. Um, I was wondering when the next traffic committee meeting was. It was supposed to be.
I don't know, I think we have one scheduled, yeah, so.
That was the Thursday after our, it's the Thursday.
So it's the Thursday after?
I think it's the twentieth, but I don't know. Yeah. Yeah.
Good luck. We can get back to you, councilmember Woodall. I, I want to say it was actually scheduled on the Wednesday following, um, the next council meeting.
That would be amazing, but they.
Yeah, same afternoon.
Oh, the same afternoon. That works out okay. Um, I want to thank Gordon for bringing up the study session. I think that's a really good idea and I do hope that we can schedule it for November. Um, I, it'll be good to have all of us take a look at that. And Amanda, were you going to be on the phone to the chamber?
I was going to call in as I drive and hold him there.
I'll be there.
Okay.
Okay.
When, when the call drops, then you'll be there.
Okay.
Okay, so I will go to the chamber.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll give it a shot.
Okay. Then I have nothing else. You have nothing, so, is there a motion to adjourn?
Same.
A motion? Second, second. We need adjourned until October eighteen.
So, you're going.
I think, yes.
Do they still have that on the board?
No, yeah.